Okay, folks, it's seven o'clock. Call this meeting in order and stand for the pledge if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And your reward for being on time, Devin, is you get to go.
Coming up there, yeah, coming up table.
Good to see you all. All right. Do we have somebody online?
We do, Jason Copel.
Hi, Jason. Nice to meet you.
Hello. Pleasure to meet you.
All right, so thanks for having me, first of all. And I'm here to, for a couple of reasons. One, doing a bit of, you know, RPC roadshow and checking in with select boards and planning commissions, see how things are going, if there are any unmet needs, and to really talk about what we have been doing and some emerging things. But also to talk about this downtown project or projects. And, you know, I understand there's been, you know, some overruns in what the original estimates were, which can be disheartening, for sure. And we're seeing that universally. You know, Fairhaven is not unique in any way. And, you know, really understanding how valuable those projects are, even in the face of those, you know, funding shortages, and that there are still opportunities out there to close those gaps. Now, obviously, you have two projects going right now, really three, two in one and one in the other. And it sounds like things are moving forward on the park and ride in the park, but there is a shortage there. You know, these projects, Fairhaven did everything right. You know, we always, in the planning process, talk about, you know, start with an idea, scope it with consultants, do a design with an engineering firm, and then construct the project, right? Fairhaven's done all those things up to construct the project. And, you know, when the scoping happened for all three of those projects, this was pre-COVID. And I can't even begin to tell you what we've seen for price increases. So as you know, we're managing the downtown pedestrian project. And that's one of probably fifteen projects that we're managing throughout the county. Not a single one is even close to the budget. And for a couple of reasons, right? Beyond COVID and material costs, there are just not contractors doing work in Rowland County that, to meet the demand. And the few that are, you know, are bidding high, that's completely fine, they're well within their right to do that. And the market is allowing it to happen as well. And we only have a few engineering firms to pick from. You guys are working with DuBois and King, they're great. They're really the blue chip firm for our region. But things are just ballooning to an extreme amount. So just to give you a reference, you know, when Fairhaven's downtown improvement pedestrian project was funded through the V-Trans Bicycle and Pedestrian Program, it was the number one project in the state at the time. And at the time, there were maybe twelve to thirteen applicants vying for the three or four million dollars. And I think the total requests for funding were about six million. This past year, there were fifteen to eighteen projects vying for that same grant program, twenty million in requests for four million in funding. So the projects, our requests are going higher because, you know, they're accounting for these overrun, overruns that just we weren't before. Needless to say, all that aside, you know, I've been talking to Joe, been talking to Stephanie, trying to keep in touch with the project. Our transportation planner has met with all of us a few times to identify there are potential funding sources to shore up this gap. You know, we've talked about a federal grant, a regional grant, and a state level grant. We think that the federal grant likely isn't appropriate because it's too big for what you all are going to likely ask. But I think some of the state programs that have already funded you, you know, we're seeing that they are, you know, supporting their projects long term by providing additional funding where necessary, right? And then, we also talked about the Northern Borders Regional Commission Grant, which is just for our area in northern New England, is those who are able to apply. And that's a real legitimate potential source. But, you know, I understand it can be, you know, seeing these numbers come in between the downtown project, and I know before with the salt and sand shed, we won't even get into that because it's even gotten worse since you guys have been pressing that. This project in particular, I just think is so vitally important for this town and our region in so many ways. And, you know, I keep tying back to that Brandon example. Certainly, it's not pound for pound. But you look at that town before and after the reconstruction and what has changed. It's a very, it's got a ton of vitality, a strong local economy, and new businesses popping up all the time because, you know, that's where people are, that's where they want to do business. Fairhaven's got just as good as a downtown, maybe even better. And I think by slowing cars down, making it safer for people, it's going to be a place where people want to stay. You know, taking out these seas of asphalt and replacing it with places where people can spend their time and their money, I think it's important. But again, you know, this is by all means a local decision. These are serious costs with a lot of money and implications. But I don't think that the town necessarily has to bear all those costs alone. You know, I think they're, just like the grant funded in the first place, I think there will be more funding for those. Granted, you know, there are certain milestones you have to reach before accessing that additional funding. You've got to make it through NEPA and right away, so the environmental and right away clearances have to be met. That's already happening with the park project, so that's good, right?
Yep, it's done.
That's done, and downtown's very close, I know. So, you know, I'm here to also answer any questions about the project or potential funding, if you all have them. And also to hear your concerns because, you know, this is something we're trying to help more than just Fairhaven establish. So just for reference, this past grant cycle, Castleton received the biggest grant from the Bike Ped Program, one point two million dollars to redo their village center in the college area on Main Street and South Street. And that'll be a huge transformative project. And then Poltoni just completed a Better Connections Master Planning Project where they, you know, are looking to redesign their Main Street and activate their public spaces, you know, support their small businesses downtown. So it's happening kind of all around Fairhaven too, and it's exciting to see because, you know, I think there's a real opportunity here. But would love to hear your all thoughts and if, you know, if these are serious concerns and if, you know, there's anything we can do to really support pushing this across the finish line more than we're already doing, just sort of in the management role, you know?
I think obviously funding, how the process goes, our biggest problem is, is we just don't have matching grant funding now. Particularly as the price goes up. And so, we'd love to commit, but we're struggling on how to get to that matching fund. And a lot of the grants that, or a lot of the grants that used to happen, used to be able to do, you know, in-kind stuff. And that's gone by the boards. And I don't understand why, but I do understand that it's not, but it's not possible anymore. I'm not sure why that was. I guess, we're like Trump, we inflated our worth or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the federal strings attached really make, you know, doing in-kind work almost possible. Now, V-Trans is basically saying it's all or nothing. You either do the whole thing yourself or not any of it. Which, yeah, I agree, it's at least site work, simple stuff, it makes complete sense. You know, why wouldn't you do that work? You maintain it, you know? But yeah, that's the truth of the matter, and it is, yeah, that's an issue. You know, understanding the full costs and then the required match, I think, is definitely important. So, you know, looking at your current Transportation Alternatives Grant, you know, that's three hundred thousand with a seventy-five thousand dollar match. You know, I understand the last bid came in at, what, nine hundred?
Something like that.
Something like that, yeah. So a match on that additional money, you know, would be significant. Another hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that was, I'm glad we're having this discussion. Because when someone says, "We seem to have a shortfall of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars", you go, "Okay." And it's nice that there's grant opportunities. But then, people are usually quick to say there are no guarantees when it comes to applying for grants, though. So two things I'd be looking for. And so we're saying, if, can we find two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars if we don't get the grant matching is the tougher question. I think, from my standpoint, convinced me that traffic calming, bringing people absolutely the right stuff to do, just it's getting into how do we, now how do we pay for this? Some towns, you talked about the projects in Castleton and other places, and as the prices go up, they might have a cushion of some ARPA funding left over that they can have. Well, we pretty much exhausted our, we don't have the ARPA funding really here in Fairhaven anymore to fall back on. So it just makes us a little more skittish, a little more concerned.
Understandable.
Why, I'm thankful you're here. It sounds like there's some encouraging things for us to look at going forward to get some additional funding. And we are at the, two of our projects, the lighting and the park and ride are all fully funding and happening. So when we look at the third project over there, it's saying, okay, timing wise, we're going through, I think you called it the NEPA, which we knew was going to be happening. And so we're still probably sitting out there, though, in that twenty-five, twenty-four, late twenty-four, twenty-five timeframe. When would this, if the funding, when would we hear? What we're bumping up against is things like Route Four paving and all that other stuff that you're aware of, right?
Absolutely.
Anything to share with us on that, or?
Yeah, you know, they typically batch these Class One paving projects together when they program them for V-Trans. And it sounds like they've batched it with Castleton and maybe West Rowland or Poltoni. Those are gonna, I think, Dufresne Group is doing that engineering. That's going to be programmed and out to bid before this project is done. It seems like they are unable to really be too flexible on their timing, which is unfortunate because it's not really how it started. But, you know, they're under the gun, their contractors are difficult to, you know, schedule. So, you know, that being said, I think Castleton's certainly in the same boat where the Class One paving program is going to happen before their project. Hopefully, there won't be a ton of, you know, pavement ripping up of fresh tar, but, you know, that is a potential risk. So I would say, consider the Class One paving sort of completely separate at this point. And then, in terms of additional funding, how that would align with the schedule, Northern Borders and the next round of Bicycle and Pedestrian Program grants, you know, are looking at 2024. So spring, it remind me, when's Northern Borders? Is that spring too?
No, that just passed.
That just passed, so that'd be late summer, yep. So at the soonest, you'd be looking at, you know, July, no, probably, you know, August to November was when you would know whether you've got the additional funding or not. And then, it's potentially possible to be able to, you know, get out to bid and construct that following season, so. FY '26, like, 2025, I think it's possible. It would be tight, but I think it's totally possible.
That's the struggle I have. Do we, do we, as a town, fund our matching grant money before we know we've got anything?
I think it's good to understand where it's coming from. You don't technically have to, but you're, when you sign that paperwork to apply for a grant,
You said you're going to.
They give a good faith effort that the match will be there. You know, because they're taking that funding away from somebody else.
Right.
Which is also true for this project, right? Like, you know, you were the number one project in 2020. This is the grant they gave out. Based on the discussions I've had with V-Trans, they're not trying to abandon the projects that they've already funded. But there are real costs, right? So, you know, I think if it came across as the number one project in 2020, asking for additional funding in 2024, maybe it was 2021, actually, it was when the funding actually came through. But either way, you know, I don't think that's unreasonable at all. And we would certainly, you know, give you guys the full support in writing that additional funding grant and really making a good case for yourselves. But the critical question to you, Bob, you know, you had said, "Where is that funding going to come from?" That's, you know, a really hard local decision to make, and I don't have an answer for you. What that could look like could be another potentially two hundred thousand dollars of local money. But think about that. You're spending twenty cents on the dollar as well for that. You know, if you're matching eighty percent, you are only spending twenty cents on the dollar. But still, it's serious money, I get it. So those decisions, I, you know, respect that you guys have to make and are difficult to make.
Can I, I'd like to ask a question, Joe. When was this project originally greenlit?
It was, you talking about the grant or the project itself? The actual work?
Both, both of them. Well, frankly, obviously, this is the select board would have had to vote to approve the project itself. When did that?
Maybe twenty, yeah, like Devin said, 2021.
Okay, all right. And let me ask you, I mean, again, pardon my ignorance on this, but wouldn't it have behooved us at the time that it was approved to know where we had, whether or not we would be able to have the funding for this? Or even better, to have identified a funding source and locked it down?
So I believe you did have the original matching funds for the five hundred thousand dollar grant?
At the time, Jason, all of the funding was in hand. As prices, as prices go up and labor costs go up, that's where you're seeing, over the last two and three years, you've seen an escalation in price from what the original estimated cost was.
Okay, and so, and so the bottom line is that this is, right now, what we're facing is looking for money for the, for the, you know, rise in cost and not for the original project itself?
Exactly right. It's market forces are beyond our control. We gotta, we take what the market can take.
One of the things, to be honest too, Jason, is that because there was cost overruns every place, we took money we thought we could target the sidewalk project with and finished off the park and ride and the lighting. We took some of the ARPA money, I think, or not ARPA money.
We took seventy-five thousand dollars of sidewalk funds and put them into another project, so we made it. It all wasn't just contractor prices going up. We felt we had time to put seventy-five thousand dollars back.
Which we may have, but it's, it's a difficult, difficult thing. I mean, and it's, it's a tough, I mean, you know, two hundred thousand dollars is twenty percent, or ten percent of our, of a year's budget.
Sure, yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, no, it's a lot. And, you know, Jason, the last couple of years post-COVID, when we've been applying to grants for, with towns, or helping towns apply for grants and writing them for them, we've been adding escalation factors of five percent year over year, and they're still not covering the overruns. And those are compounding five percent, which were born from a consultant-derived cost estimate. They weren't just us or the town deciding it was an actual engineering firm. So, you know, I get, it's, it's, you know, it's an unsustainable rate. Hopefully, it's not going to continue at this rate, but it's a lot, it's a lot of money. But, again, you know, if we're using those state and federal funds, then certainly less than if you're doing it on your own.
Sure. Thank you very much, Doug.
Other questions, anybody?
Yeah.
And the only other thing we talked about was saying, as we're going to, we have a little more engineering, sounds like the needs to be done as we're going through the NEPA process and the thing. So there's, there's probably, to continue on, we're going to probably need to spend, but I'm trying to, I don't want to underestimate that, another twenty-five, thirty thousand?
Yeah, we gotta, I think we got like sixty into it, yeah. Twenty thousand, just a rough estimate.
Which is cheaper than a lot of towns are paying right now.
I was just saying, that, as you're saying, okay, well, there's still a chance to get there, that's.
Yeah, I think, you know, things, as they stand now, are on a good track. You know, there's been nothing that's been like, oh my God, this project is doomed. It's a good, good project, it's just, you know, the fact of the overruns that are high. At least they're fairly known now. I think that's an important piece to like, what's the appropriate target for that, showing up those gaps? So, you know, happy to come back and chat with you more after you've thought about it or when there is that next opportunity. Likely, I won't be running it, I don't have to do that stuff anymore, which is really nice. But our transportation planner has been awesome in doing that work. And he got two million out of the three million this year for Bike Ped. So he did pretty well.
Doing some good stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, which is encouraging for Rowland County.
Is there a possibility of any other funding coming down the road that we don't know about yet?
Always. There's always, especially, you know, we haven't seen all of the, all the pieces of the Infrastructure Act yet come through. So there's always potential. We'll certainly keep our ears to the ground, Rich, and let you guys know if there's something that looks appropriate. Because it's not the small ones, it's not the huge ones. It's right in that kind of middle Goldilocks territory that you mean.
One of the things that Welch's Chief of Staff, when he was in, when he was a congressman, and she's now the Assistant in the Senate, said that they were looking at coming up with some sort of a person that they could use, that small towns could use. Because the big towns can afford to hire somebody to access that funding. And so they were looking at that, and I just, I haven't had a chance to talk to her. I, she's friends with my brother John. So, so we, I could talk to her, but I haven't talked to her in a while. I wondered if you had heard any kind of?
So we are doing a program like that, which was included in the Budget Adjustment Act called the Municipal Technical Assistance Program. But this is just for our very small, small towns. So we're working in Pollitt, Timoth, Ira, the Middle Town Springs, West Haven, Benson. So what we're hearing, though, is that this first phase are these towns in the top twenty-five percent of municipal need. They created a formula, they ranked all the towns. Fairhaven isn't in that top twenty-five, but it is in the next vein, fifty to twenty-five, which they're going to open up next. Now, basically what that, the RPCs are contracted to work with the towns to access federal funding, apply for the funding, scope the project, manage the project. We're willing to do that for you guys outside of that program. But if the next round of towns is unlocked, and Fairhaven is one of them, we will certainly advocate for you guys to be part of that group. It's so early and everyone's so behind because of the flooding that we're barely getting through our first round of towns. So likely, it wouldn't be until, I would say, the winter or spring when Fairhaven might be considered for that program. That being said, you bring up a good point about Senator Welch and the other congressional delegation and that. You know, they do have those, they're no longer federal earmarks, but.
Appropriations.
The appropriations funding. It's possible we could lobby our delegation and see if this is a project they would consider adding to that list. I think it's got every merit to be added. So, you know, that's something we could look to do. We've been in touch with Welch's and Ballance folks a few times this year and could reach out and ask. Can't remember the timing on that. Certainly, a budget showdown and government shutdown are not good indicators for federal governments, but that's okay. I'm sure they're still going to have those as part of the scheme this year.
When did the town office money come?
It's usually in winter time, right?
Yeah, we receive the money in, or we receive the green light to use the money in a December-January timeframe. But it's got to be coming up on time for that.
Yeah, this fall.
Yeah.
What might be helpful from you guys is, you know, the criteria, what, you know, what the downtown looks like, what the, what the potential goal is, what, you know, those kind of things that bureaucrats love to hear. And, you know, if you can come up with some basic stuff like that, that we can fill in the blanks.
Yeah. We've got a whole, we've got a whole forty-page application from the first one that explains all this stuff, and we can pull from that. Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's a lot of information on this project, which is good, that we can pull from.
It'd be nice if we could lump them, lump all three of the programs together.
I agree.
And say it's a downtown revitalization.
Which it is.
Yeah. And slam it into an appropriation. That would really free up the extra money that we've.
Phase one, phase two, phase three.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. That's a really good idea.
Because I think that'd be more appropriate than RACE. We had looked at RACE.
Yeah, we talked about that.
The lowest value RACE grant was what, four or eight million dollars? So it's not, it's too big, you know? So, yeah.
Good.
Okay, awesome. And then, just real quick, some other stuff that's going on, you know, for you guys. We're working with Bob and the Planning Commission on the town plan and zoning updates. That's working through its course, which is great. We're under the gun, I mean, that timeline is fast approaching. The plan expires in March, I think.
June.
June, sorry, I'm getting confused with Brandon. Yeah, June.
Don't push.
So you're, you're in good, good hands with working with Logan?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I understand that your assessment schedule for the Municipal Energy Resonance Program, is that right? Just great. That's huge. That funding could be transformative for, is it this building? Yeah, I figure. Been in the other room long enough to know. And then, yeah, there's municipal planning grants and bylaw modernization grants that are open now. You guys have an open bylaw modernization grant, so no need to go over that. But if there is something the town is considering, you know, that municipal planning grant's always a really good source. You know, I know there's been a lot of discussion about around rec and trails and other things happening, town garage. You know, those are really good funding sources to scope those type of projects. So let us know, they're due November first. We can obviously help write those applications, but that's a really good way to fund planning studies. But also, the big push this year, I think, is capital planning for towns, which we're finding is more important than ever to have a capital planning program and fund for the, you know, tandem dump trucks that go down and the salt sheds that are going to be replaced and, or built. You know, you know what I mean? So, some things to consider there. Great?
Just so everybody knows, the Regional Planning Commission has been a huge help with the zoning regs and the beginning of the town plan. It's, I can't thank you guys enough, it's been.
That's what we're going to do.
Logan is, Logan is very detail oriented, I love that. You know, really, really good.
Yeah, he's working out great. He's our newest planner. He's great, and we're actually hiring right now an economic development and workforce development planner. So we are trying to resurrect the Workforce Investment Board. It's been long stalled.
The WIB.
The WIB, yep. And also, take advantage of some of these federal economic development programs for towns like y'all, so. Awesome. Thank you so much for the time. I know I went way, way over. Awesome, thank you so much for the time, I know I went way, way over, but I think it was worthwhile, at least, hopefully.
You're doing some great stuff, and did you just update your website a little bit?
We got a new website.
Redesign your website as well?
Yeah.
I dropped in to see every now and then, like, see what's going on in there, and I'm like, oh, okay.
Yeah, I got a major facelift, it hasn't been on in a long time, very proud of that. And another very, very big thing that's coming down the line that will affect you and every town in the region is, we are beginning our rewrite of the regional plan. We have a super robust, three-year plan of attack on this thing, we're gonna do a ton of outreach and engagement, so we'll let you know, you know, how you can get involved and to make sure important projects are included from Fairhaven, so we're excited to work on that. It will be a monster undertaking, but we're gonna try to make it not three hundred pages this time, shoot it for a hundred fifty, so, we'll see how that goes. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming in.
Take care, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Good to meet you, Jason.
Thank you. All right. Yep. Otter Creek Communications, unless you want to add anything, you know, Joe, Tracy's sick and not gonna be here.
She, so I asked Tracy what the board needed to do for this, and what it is, is the report from the Otter Creek Communication District. It doesn't look like there's any input, other than action saying, yes, we received it, or we accept it. I didn't, I read through it, I didn't see where there was any input from the town.
There wasn't an ask in there?
No.
It's coming.
Yeah, I, they didn't say they needed money yet, but they...
It's coming. But there is, there's a lot of grant money to do that, too, so, that's why we need to get involved in it.
If the board wanted to accept it? Or, at least say you've received it?
Well, in that case, we could do a motion if you wanted to do that. I'm not precisely sure, and I didn't get any feedback from Tracy, that it had to be done tonight, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean...
Can we, can we push that out?
Sure.
I think we put it to the next meeting, to the next meeting, and we can get a little more update from her. One of the things I know, and this is just a personal thing, that their meetings are at a difficult time for her to make, so she's gonna probably try to find a replacement. Because their meetings are like at five o'clock, between four and five o'clock, and she's still got clients at that time, so, can't do it. Anyway, I don't think we have to do it.
Okay.
I'm making kind of a guess there. All right, so amendments to the agenda.
I'd like to add, under new business, the sand and gravel bids, and make that under new business B. So I'll make a motion to add that.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that's it, right? Okay, so that's a new business, thank you. Any other amendments, anyone's got? Okay, approval of minutes is September nineteenth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from September nineteenth?
Second.
A second.
Additions, deletions, corrections?
I had a few, and I'll give you, with Claire not being here, I'll give you one. On page one, people present were missing Mike Standard and Glenn Roberts after, enlist names. Then, towards the, under elected auditors, under their report, the next to the last sentence, where Travers asked that minutes be taken at meetings, it should be Travers asked that agendas and minutes be taken at meetings and posted on the town website, is how that should read.
Bob, question for you, is there a forum in the room right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
The reason I ask is because I do not have a copy of minutes from last meeting, so I'm going to abstain from the vote, I just wanted to make sure there were enough members present to pass it.
Thank you. Yep, we're good.
On page two, under manager's report, where it says that we're talking about the Municipal Resiliency Program, the second sentence says, this, to show the energy improvements made, it should be, it should read not made, but needed to be made. The reason, it almost looks like they're coming in, looking at what we already did, and the intent was they're coming in to identify energy improvements. Down further, on the next to the last bullet under manager's report, Mr. Grino's inquiry, no applications have been received for the open superintendent of public works, that should be mechanic slash operator position. And the last bullet, where the sentence says, have been that patent, I think Spellcheck took over and changed it on her, it should be, have been more than patient with this Page three, under budget discussion guidance, you get through the first, down about the first paragraph, where it said, Mr. Travers stated he would not support a budget with with, we just have one too many wheths, just take out one of those wheths, and then I'm good, that's all I have.
Is that all?
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, you okay with those additions in your second? Everybody understand what we're doing? Can you give a copy of that to Claire, or you gave it to the public?
I'll cut it in where we're gonna get changed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And one abstention, I assume?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. Let's move on. Five minutes for public comment. You're the public.
I just, and please forgive my ignorance, yes, I haven't been coming as often in the last few years. What was the big problem with the salt shed project? I'm just, I'm totally ignorant.
It just went way, way above what we expected to pay. It went, it was, it just mushroomed to a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar project from what it should have been, which...
Because of post-COVID?
Yeah, and frankly, frankly, people just decided that, you know, that, I don't know why, it just went out of, out of control. Anybody else can, if I say what I want to say, I'll probably offend.
Joe, do you want to explain a little bit about the cost?
Yeah, the cost just ballooned out. The original program was a two-hundred, and I want to say two-hundred-and-five, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar project to put up one of these TARP domes to hold the salt. Once we got through COVID, and we went out, started going out to bid, construction, and then the construct, the labor to build it was exorbitant, and then the actual dome itself had started to tick up five and ten percent, you know, every few months. So it became, it came to a point where we just couldn't afford it.
What's the problem with what we've got now? And again, I'm pleading, completing, or ignorance.
Yeah, it's, and it's seen better, better days, it's been shored up a few times, it's time to replace it.
If you went down to town garage and looked at what we got over the top of that, there'll be no question in your mind.
My husband goes and gets the sand and stuff, so I, like...
Take a ride with him sometime.
But it's a, it's one where, it, once it went over half a million to put that, to put a salt shed in here, we decided to scuttle the project would be the best, that we would wait.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a moment.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a question, going back to Mr. Grino's discussion there. At this point, you were saying like, you know, the matching funds, just they're there now. What happens if we don't have the matching funds? Does the town owe all the money they've spent to this point?
It's possible.
If we decide not to move, not to move forward.
To move forward, come up with the money somehow.
Yeah. The only thing, and the only thing I, that Devin didn't really explain, he's explaining the worst-case scenario when we're talking about how much money.
Right.
If some of these grants that they're applying for come in, we could actually fill some, if it's a glass half-full, half-empty, if you think it's half-full, we could get some monies to actually put back for some of our other projects that ran over, and we could be sitting good, but in order to show the full case, and that's what he was trying to do, so he wasn't, he didn't sugarcoat Denny, before we were.
No, we did not.
He didn't.
Well, I think he's, I think that the problem is, is he's seeing it every place, and so he's, he doesn't want anybody to be surprised. And it's, it's tough, I mean, all the things that, you know, the in-kind thing is a real, you know, that's, that sticks a micro, because that was one way towns were able to afford stuff, they, they put their people in there and were able to say, this is our matching funds, the in-kind project, we've got people here, they're knowledgeable, they can do what they want, but that's not the way it works anymore, and it's pretty infuriating that, that that doesn't happen, because it's sometimes our only saving grace.
Explain.
In-kind? Where we have a matching grant of twenty percent, we can take, we used to be able to take town workers and put them in and charge against the, against the in-kind donation that we had for, you know, so their, their labor would be considered part of our matching grant.
Oh, okay.
But that doesn't happen.
Which would only make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't happen anymore. Yeah, because it makes sense.
It's a lot like the sidewalk in front of the grade school we did a while back here, where our group who did some pre-work and everything here to help keep the project, but there was no grant funding involved, and we, so I don't believe, yeah. Good.
Anybody else? Department head reports. You're here.
We got some.
Report.
I received some good news today. I've been saying for close to two years now about our electrical issues and upgrades. Our PLC cabinet has been completed, RASP will be here the twenty-third to start installing that, changing over all of our wiring, so that, hopefully by the end of November, will be all done. So after two years, we can get rid of all of our ghosting ruins and the electrical and signals. Blake, our intern, is coming along pretty good. He's energetic, wants to learn, wants to keep going, so I'm very impressed with that, hopefully he'll stick it out. And we have seemed to recovered from our water main break, we're back to where we were beforehand, as far as our readings and testing and all that goes, so. No more blasting effects on that, thank God.
No.
Have we received any information from that engineer that checked the pipe over yet, or not?
Yes, the engineers, the engineers sent images to their, like, their pipe guy, their pipe expert. We've, we've bounced around between what our working theories were. Originally, it was, hey, it was wet soils that the pipe shifted, they decided it didn't happen, and then they decided it was corroded because of the heavy wet soils, and that was not the case. The most recent thought was, it was installed improperly, and they had torqued the bolts down wrong, which made it, made the pipe crack at the bell right down the, right down the bolt, right down the bolt hole. The pipe people came back and said, no, it's been in the ground for what, forty years or however long, said if it was gonna crack, it would have cracked, you know, right when the water hit it, or about that time. So I got to talk to, in fact, I was supposed to have a call to Jason today, we want to send the pipe out to these people, these specialists, so that way they can take a look and see what happened, because it's an unusual, it's an unusual break, to break along the, for lack of a better term, the seam and then up over the bell. So we're still, we're still looking to get information from that.
Okay, well, the first pipe they replaced did not include the bell, was cracked, in between.
That pipe, that's the one that they clawed out and smashed out, so, yeah, we don't have any information on that.
The piece that we looked at was the second.
Yeah. The other piece was, that was not, we couldn't look at it because it was gone.
Sure.
I just wanted to give you some updates on some kind of exciting things that we have going on down there. The plant has actually teamed up with Vermont Works for Women, the Trail Blazers Group, and we have a tour set for the week after next, so we have a group of women that are gonna come and actually check out the plant, and then in November, we're actually gonna have one of them come and be an intern for three weeks, and the Vermont agency actually pays them to come. And so basically what it is, it's getting women interested in fields that they wouldn't normally go into, hence wastewater. So that's kind of exciting, and last week I got to spend three days in New Hampshire as the Operator Exchange. Vermont got to go to New Hampshire this year, and New Hampshire's coming to Vermont in November. And so it was kind of exciting because I had to go to five different plants, and I learned a lot. So I've got some great ideas to bring back to our plant, and it was also very exciting because some, I had some, met some new networking, and I found out that municipalities can actually buy equipment from each other without going through the bidding process, so that was kind of, get to see some equipment that we might actually be able to get at a fairly decent One of the things that we focused in on was pretreatment, and Fairhaven does not have a pretreatment program at all. One trip down to the wastewater plant, you can see all the grease that's kind of floating on top of the aeration tank, and I know we've been kind of hesitant to push that pretreatment with our vendor, you know, our customers here in town, because we don't want to make it any harder on them, but they said one easy thing that you can do is you can just tell the restaurants and such that you're going to come for an inspection, and they said normally that fixes the problem. So just saying that you're gonna come and look at it, they normally clean it up, so it might have been cleaned for four or five years, so at least once a year, it's gonna get cleaned, and that actually helps a lot. So it doesn't really cost the restaurant owners any extra money, because they're just doing work that they should have been doing, and it's kind of a simple, hey, we're gonna come and make sure it's all right, and doesn't cost anybody anything, and it'll actually help us.
Thanks.
Oh, one other thing we're working on, I, when I was in New Hampshire, I found out the testing process for getting your license for wastewater is completely different in New Hampshire than it is in Vermont. So when you're taking the test in Vermont, it's one hundred questions, it's multiple choice, it's right or wrong, but New York, or New Hampshire actually has a setup that they have some multiple choice questions, and they have an essay question, and for their math problems, if you get the formula right and you write it down on your paper, you actually get partial credit, where Vermont, it's right or wrong. And I know a lot of operators go in and take their tests, and they're missing it by two points. And, you know, you really prep for this exam, and to go in and miss it by two points is kind of, you know, a major letdown, so I'm actually going to start lobbying the state of Vermont to try and get our testing changed. There, you can look around, and you can see there's a shortage of operators, and some people just aren't good test takers, so maybe you, you know, inverted two numbers on your math question, but you, but you knew the right process, so, you know, I'm gonna work on that, too.
Oh, that's great. Are you still looking at solar panels over there?
Yeah, I had two companies come last week, and they're, they haven't gotten me their bids yet, they needed a little bit more information, so they're actually looking at the transfer station, too, because they thought the roof on their recycling building might be a perfect roof. the roof on their recycling building might be a perfect roof. Based on where it's located. They have to, um, have it structurally tested though to make sure that that roof would hold the solar panels. Um, one of the good things that might come out of that is when we did the upgrade, we didn't put in any backup, um, generator source at the plant. And the solar company thinks that they may be able to put in some batteries that would actually give us some extra ba-, um, backup power if the plant goes down. Which could actually, they're getting, I need to give them the information on our RAS pumps cause that's what I'm most worried about. Right now our chemicals will go for a few hours, but our RAS pumps, they don't have anything to run that. And they said they can actually possibly hook it up so that the backup battery power could run the RAS pumps.
Hmm. Thanks. Good. Thanks. Thank you. That's, that's good stuff. You're up.
So, uh, we had eight arrests in the last two weeks. Um, and that ranged from disorderly conduct by electric means, we had security for monitored people, um, driving a lot of license, fraud reasons, credit card, um, some payback, so it's kind of cavalry, interesting stuff. Um, so that's up from two weeks before, so. 37 traffic tickets, nine written warnings, two parking violations, and three car crashes. We had 17 sets of civilian fingers in it. Um, somewhere in here, we took delivery of a new sign. It's identical to the one in Capitol Hill. Um, I think it's here. I have the, everything, I don't work, I thought it was here, but I will find it. Um, so that's here, and then we were able to purchase three flashlights. Um, and that was a total of, the flashlight were $4,000. But totally, it was $4,000, um, just under a few dollars. And that was sent to Government Highway Safety for reimbursement. That was covered under traffic safety, um, items. Um, if you look at longevity, that Chris DeBeal, the part-time officer, started his third year. Um, Sergeant Kerber started his 16th. And I realize that Bonnie's actually started her 20th year this year. Um, pretty good medical service, but too, they've been here a long time. Um, and then obviously, um, Sean knew, I think he thought it last week or two weeks, it was cleared, just, I just saw that immediately, it was cleared by the local county's sixth attorney and that's still kind of his internal office. Um, so hopefully that'll get wrapped up pretty soon. Um, in the last two weeks, we had 120 calls, um, for service and a total of 31, 56 for the year. And then I did a, um, in the report, I gave you a breakdown of revenue for, um, the month of September. It's not complete because some of the stuff hasn't been filled yet and, um, like the traffic year posted there, I think it's usually the second week of the month, so I wouldn't have that. But I'll, the next, um, report I'll add that. If you have any questions or concerns or problems? Questions?
Anybody? Jase?
Uh, no.
Okay. Think we're good. Thank you. Thank you all.
Mm-hmm.
Manager gets to jump up now.
All right. We'll, we will start with, um, communications. Uh, I received a, I received a letter from Sarah Trombley. I said, received an email from Sarah Trombley yesterday. Uh, she regrets to inform us that she's resigned as the town health officer. So the town is looking for a health officer again.
Hey. Good.
We had an assistant, uh, is the...
The assistant is still the assistant. He's, he's held on to the, the position, though he's in college and he's back and forth. Um, he's around, but not as much as he used to be.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, we'll start with DPW and what they've been up to. Uh, they've started the fall grading, so you'll see the grader up and down our dirt roads. Um, we've done a little bit of ditching. If you're out on Big Low Hill and Inman, gee, uh, Mike's not here. Uh, Inman Pond, they've been trying to ditch that out. We're getting water runoff off of Inman and Big Low, right there at Sheldon. So they're, they're fixing that area up. Uh, potholes continue to be filled. Uh, they have a bad, we found a bad curb stop down on Adam Street, so they've prepped for that and that dig will be tomorrow. Um, those can always be a little shaky when you start opening up those curb stops. Um, leaf cleanup is underway, so you'll see them out there blowing and sweeping. Uh, they've got a little bit of brush cutting done. The new signs, if you've been on Fourth Street, the 25 mile an hour signs are up.
They look good.
I was like, did I miss that?
Yeah. They've been there for years, Roseanne. Uh, the restroom trailer was repaired, then the restroom trailer was broken again. Um, th- th- this has been an absolute nightmare of a piece of equipment. Um, we fixed it up, somebody went back in, broke one, broke another toilet, um, and made an ungodly mess. Um, just, so, we're, we're trying to work out how we're gonna handle this. Um, one idea was just keying it like, um, like a bathroom in a gas station. You get one key, you go in, you use it, you come out, the door locks behind you. So that way we don't have, like, loads of kids going in. And if there are loads of kids going in, we can kind of track.
And where would the key be? Who would be in charge of it?
Uh, the coaches. When the coaches are down there, they, each coach would have a key.
Is, is this the only time that's unlocked when coaches are down there? Or is there other, is it open online?
Uh, this, I think the school has a key. So, but same thing, if, if a, um, parent or a teacher is down there, they can open it, or open it, or have a key.
Did, did this most recent one happen during school hours or after hours? And do we, I know we talked some about more lighting and camera. And that sounds like it's still...
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the...
I don't know. I'm just...
The lighting and cameras would help, at least we could see the space, so we'd know if it happened at night or not. I mean, they should, the doors should be locked at night, there's no doubt about that. Um, but you can't put cameras in the bathroom to see who's damaging that, so.
I just didn't know if...
It's a difficult situation.
Yes.
Yep.
The school does have cameras in there, but sometimes the lighting isn't the best. I mean, we did make, the one, we made a rest on it at one point.
Based on what was...
Off cameras, but that was done during the day.
Well, that, I think the, the improvements that the rec committee that was in here, that was one of the things they were talking about. Much better lighting and, and, uh, security, camera security, so.
I, I honestly hate the idea of putting cameras in a public place. I don't like the idea of Big Brother.
I don't either.
But, but the level of vandalism we've seen just downtown and at the park lately is just...
We, we need to, and see, I don't have a problem with cameras. No, I'm saying that we, we need to get, it's a very small percentage of people that are doing this vandalism. We need to identify them. And deal with it. And make sure that they're, they're punished, absolutely. And, and whether that be, and I, I'm not saying whether they're children, adults, or whatever, we don't know. I'm just saying that's not acceptable. And I have a problem with just saying, well, geez, we lock everything up and walk away. No, I think we're fully capable of, of putting something in place to find out who that small percentage is and then go deal with that small percentage.
Yep. And that's not, the, the police are doing everything they can, I don't, I'm not throwing stones at you.
No, no.
The, the police are focusing on these areas, it's just...
But it can be everywhere all the while.
Well, you see a cop car come up and then you just run away and hide, and then you come straight...
Statistically a nightmare to get in there, even if you park from Main Street or walk down.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta come through the lighted area out and they have an advantage of, you know, see you before you can see them. And then if you have a car, there's one way in, one way out. I know Friday and I had some kids in there and I had to catch them, but they were just riding bicycles in the back parking lot, they weren't doing anything. Um, it's just, it's really, this is a, one of the more trying situations and I think, it's a minor, but it's not minor, it's expensive.
It's expensive.
I do think, like Bun said, I do think it's a, it's a small...
I, I think for the vast...
And I think it's the same group that's doing it, it's my personal...
Yep. And, uh, we thanked the DPW folks, they came in and they helped to remove the AC units and store those. And they helped the police chief with a few, um, just maintenance things over in the police department. So thank you to them for that. Uh, for the manager, uh, the, so we did add the, we talked about earlier, there is an auditor tab on the website now, so we'll, uh, once we get all the stuff from the auditors, we can slam that in there. Uh, we talked about selling some town land a few months ago?
Yeah, over a year ago.
Yeah, so those, those, uh, on the advice of the real estate agent, I sent those listings out to the abutters and I have three or four interested parties right now for land. Um, some other people interested, they said they would get back with me, so, um, next meeting, I'm hoping to bring some, some information to the board. Uh, we have a few bids, we have an F-550 out for bid right now, out for sale, sitting down on River Street by the garage. Um, I'm gonna let that ride for a few more weeks, we've got four bids for it right now. Uh, we, we talked a little bit about the water, the water main break. We did meet with Jason, uh, Mr. Greeno, myself and DPW met with Jason and the water plant, uh, Mike from the water plant, met with the engineer. Uh, his, his good news was, he says, you don't need to start digging up the entire pipe. Like, what's there is there, we don't need to, we don't need to replace the whole thing. Um, which is great, cause I was ready to go full bore into it. Uh, and, oh, that's exciting. So, the last election in March, the town voted to buy some, buy some picnic tables. Um, we finally got those picnic tables in, so I wanted to ask the board, um, where we wanted to place the, the one picnic table on the green. So this is the picnic tables that just cement into the ground, kind of like that black one, the new black one we have. So in the packet, you'll have that right there. If the board has a, um, a desired location, we'll ask DPW to install that.
Question, where we, is there, like, we put one in this quadrant over towards, uh, Main Street.
Yep.
Is there, uh, where would other tables, I, I think of the park and I think, put it in, make a quad, quadrant out of there. Is there, if there's a table there, is there, are there ta, and there's a table probably, I think down in this area here, there's probably a wooden table? I'm just looking where, where we don't have...
I wanna make sure, look at it the same way you're looking at it here.
Where, where we don't have, is, are there...
A wooden table, I think that moved.
Right, but is there, is there a portion where...
No, you turned it the wrong way, you're looking at it. I was looking at it north to south, you're eas, you're looking at it east to west.
This way here?
That's north to south. This is, this is that long crosswalk that goes down to the, like, the bus stop is here.
Yeah, there's one right about here now, right?
Across from the bank.
The reason for my question is saying, I don't wanna see the picnic tables all in one spot. I'd like to see them around so that families can come in and, and they'd have some room and, and, and it's, I'm not trying to put it, but if we have like, we do farmer's market up on this end right here, is there, is there a table in either of the two quadrants up here, just outside?
Uh, no, there's, I think there's a bench, so there's a bench on the north side, right? Over here. The, the new, the new table we put in is over, over here.
I'm, I'm just thinking, call me crazy, but I, I, with the farmer's market here, nice to have a picnic table inside that someone could sit down, but also, uh, town employees that are, that are here and they go out for lunch in the summertime and you sit, sit at the, the picnic table and have sandwiches that you brought in and it's kind of, would be kind of cool. Uh, I, I don't know.
Not a bad idea. I can pull along with that. Anybody else?
That's just my two cents.
Strong opinion?
I think we should have them scattered throughout.
We're doing it one at a time.
But, uh, one at a time. I, I don't really have a preference, as long as we start getting some action on it.
How about I drop it in the, uh, over here under these trees, so the town hall's up here.
Mm-hmm.
Just somewhere in the space to, cause the other one's over here.
Um, yeah, just make sure you're not, you know, are you talking about where the, where the, uh, lager's thing is?
Ooh, that is the lager's thing.
Yeah, so maybe just make it to the side of that, you know, they're, they're not, they're in the middle, so get it more close to the fence or something, maybe.
Or be more towards, uh, the fallen, down that and there.
Yeah, a little bit farther down.
Instead of being in the middle of the space, yeah.
That's a good idea. Okay. We will not block up the log, uh, lumberjacks.
Lumberjacks, sorry.
Good.
Yes, thank you.
You had a question you were gonna ask, too?
I, I did, and I thought that, yeah, you guys had moved on, so I don't know if it's okay to readdress something.
Sorry, I missed you, I didn't, I didn't see you raising your hand.
No, like I said, it was, it was after you guys had passed it. Is there a way we could put a fence around the, I don't know what they are, bathrooms down there? I mean, could you like put a fence that you can lock at nighttime?
Yes.
Maybe you'd still need someone to go lock and unlock.
But, but the bathroom's already locked at night.
Yeah, but I'm thinking if you have a fence around it, then you can also have cameras on that. Give you a little more, instead of there being one lock they have to get through, now you've got two locks to get through.
I, I, it's not, it's, it's, it's not a terrible idea, it's just that I, I mean, being a kid once, I would've, I would've assumed that as a challenge.
Yeah, I'd be over the fence, over the fence and in and, you know...
But it would give more time?
Yeah, that's true, and, and there'd be, yeah, it's not, it's not a horrible idea. It's just like, geez, it doesn't seem what it's...
It just boils your buns, that...
That we have to do, we have to think this way.
Exactly. Where the heck are the parents?
That's a question that has been asked more than once. But that's something we can investigate, at least see what, what the expense is and that's something I'd run between the, uh, the rec committee, the nation rec committee.
You know how you say you don't like the, you don't like i- idea of cameras? Don't want it to look like a prison down there.
Exactly.
I, I mean, and that's, that's what I, I'm thinking, I'm seeing folks, I, I, I'd be more concerned if it looked like a prison.
Let me get this right, so, infringement and rights and privacy is okay, but not making it look like a prison.
Whoever's breaking in, breaking into that place and vandalizing, we should take them and arrest them and prosecute them and charge their families for all the damage they've done. Absolutely. I'm saying it's about time we hold some people accountable for their behavior. Whoever those people are.
What would happen if you brought that to the state's attorney?
Um, we would just have to, uh, new processes, we have to ask for a court date. So that might be April. And, once they say yes is your court date, then we serve a citation off. It's similar to an adult criminal court, except it goes to family courts, all the same process.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it, it's absolutely true, it's absolutely the way that should happen, I don't...
Do, do towns have any authority of, uh, kind of rendering, uh, consequences in lieu of charges?
Like some community service?
Yeah.
We have done that through civil ordinances, traffic violations, that kind of stuff. We have done community service, we continue to do that. We do it a lot with, um, the town has disorderly conduct ordinances. We use that a lot more at the school and then lots of times we'll take, if a student gets that violation, we'll do community service and blue up that fine. So yes, we do do that, we don't have a justice center or a community, um...
What's the program that they have in the, in the, it's statewide, but it's...
Diversion?
Yeah, diversion.
The diversion program.
Diversion program, yeah.
So, yeah, there is a statewide program, which, um, you send it over, the state's attorney will look at it and recommend, you know, first time offender, a lot of times they'll, they'll shuffle it through the version and then, I don't, again, the youth is different. Once juvenile's been charged, I mean, we can't, we don't know anything after that. They don't tell us anything. Um, so if we can intercept sooner, a lot of times we can do that. You know, if a parent agreed to repair the vandalism and the kid gets community service, that's something we can do prior to going to criminal. We do look at those albums when, when we deem it's appropriate. We do look at those albums when, when we deem it's appropriate. There are some people that have been in the system a lot, that it's, you're wasting your time, 'cause they've been in that route before.
We did this before with some kids. I think it was actually down there, where they, they had smashed the windows or they'd done some damage. There was four children, and it was such a burden on us, 'cause the parents would ignore you, the parents would ignore you. I had one parent that was responsive and took responsibility. Most didn't, the other three didn't, and it was a burden to keep on them, to get them to pay, and some, two of them didn't, so it's, I haven't had a good experience with that.
Moving on. Uh, new business. Governor's Highway Safety Grant.
So this is similar to the last couple of years. Um, they send a, um, pre-authorization to work. Depending on the official grant coming, what I was looking for, the grant expired on the thirtieth, we're looking for, um, the board's approval to operate, continue to operate the grant on, under the pre-authorization from Governor's Highway Safety Program. And that's been how it plays, I think, for the last three years. Nothing's changed in the grant. What I did learn in the last two weeks is there is an educational piece of that, and we utilized it in the last granting, um, but it's for the car seat safety checks, um, how to stall car seats, um, if there was any programs that we could do at high school or educational, throughout the community projects that are approved by Governor's Highway Safety, there's, they have some established ones or something we came up with, that we could have officers do that and then do the reverse program. So that's a new component that was actually last year that, I guess they overlooked until this last month, we actually had some. And there's also a distracted driving piece in the grant, so there's like four sections of the grant. We've never used it. It's hard, you have occupant protection, distracted driving, and DUI. So DUI is geared more towards after four o'clock, you know, a three thirty, four o'clock window on. Highway safety is anytime, occupant protection, so it's hard to, which pool, which pot of money do you wanna pull out? Do you wanna do distracted driving, or do you wanna do occupant, so, so, but when we do the grants, we look at all those aspects regardless. So it's, it's kinda hard to say we're gonna pull out of this grant, so, but there's four aspects on the grant. We primarily just stayed with the two. So again, I'm just looking for, um, approval to continue that operation. And they've been three times in the payment, and it's actually been faster than normal. And again, by participating in that, we, that's how we got the, we got four thousand dollars this year.
That's how we get the speeds.
And last year, that's why we got the speed signs up on Capitol Hill. I do think it's effective, um, if you guys have noticed.
I think it is.
So, and they're movable, so if we, that's how you've got Capitol Hill, I'll put both of them on Fourth Street. We have the mobile, that speed cart we got from, um, you guys have been around, but that speed cart was eight or nine thousand dollars, it's out on Fourth Street today. That was paid by Governor's Highway Safety probably ten years ago, so, um, those are the type of things, and it, and it varies. If we've gotten up to eight thousand dollars in equipment, that we've gotten for this year, so, I don't know how they determine the pots of money, but, I'd like to continue that program if you guys are interested.
So is that the, that's the one that, that we, we give you tentative approval until the paperwork comes that we sign, right?
And we'll give you the actual grant for your review. We'll look at it, highlight any changes in the year before. You guys can review it and then do the second official round through.
I think the motion will continue to, to do this program.
Second?
Second.
How much of it is in, in town and how much of it is out?
Um, we pretty much pulled back. Like, I know we did a road check on Route Thirty in Castleton, um, Governor's Highway Safety, the Sheriff's Office, so we're gonna do a road check um, in Castleton. We went over, did the road check and came back. I don't think we really did much to click it or tick it. We just haven't had the manpower, so we haven't really been utilizing as much as we, we would like to, or there's just anybody who work right now. So I would say ninety-five or better, ninety-eight percent are all, since it's been years, we have not been venturing. I think, we used to venture over sometimes at thirty, but I don't think even we're doing that. We've been, a lot of it's twenty-two A. I mean, if you look in that report, there's one thing, eighty-two, eighty-five, seventy-nine, you just didn't have one section in, that road is nonstop.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can you get more of those things for the crosswalks?
Um, we did get them this year. Um, I know Rich was trying to make a couple out of what was left.
I can make one out of two down here. I'll try to get that done this week.
I think that they're very beneficial. The problem is, is they're not, they're about three hundred and fifty dollars a sign, so we had twelve hundred in the last one, so we did buy out of the Highway Safety Grant, but they're getting wrecked almost as fast as we're on.
Oh, they're a target, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if it's just distracted driving, or did you pick trucks on them over, or what it is.
I know the other day, I was, I was coming in from trying to cross by the park to Cloud Nine, that corner. And, I mean, I was coming from the park, so you can't miss people standing there. You might be able to miss people, uh, coming the other way. And these people were just driving by me. I finally went out and went, "Really? You can't see me?" And the woman stopped dead, backed up. And I said, "Thank you," and I crossed. But, it's ridiculous.
And I do think it was better when the signs were there. And again, I'm hoping the discussion that we had earlier with Governor Mary about that, that may help with crosswalks, and again, I know it's expensive, but I'm hoping long-term that this, that project is able to be funded. Just because if you think that'll help with pedestrian traffic, pedestrians moving at speed, you know, coming over the middle, that kinda area by having that revamped. And it beautifies the town and it's revitalization, but I do think from a public safety side, it would be beneficial. So, yes, I would, I would like to get some more of those signs. Joe and I talked, maybe, maybe going a different route and putting them through on either side, instead of being in the middle, but they're not quite the target, that they're out on the sides. But again, you're looking at seven hundred dollars a crosswalk versus three fifty if you do that, so it's all funding.
Joe, what about one of those blinky, blinky signs, crosswalk?
Yeah, they ha, I mean, I looked and I think there was, um, LED, we'll just say stop signs out there, but similar crosswalks, I think they're, they're close to eleven hundred dollars, and they're solid dollar. So you have eleven hundred dollars a sign, but that would have the, I mean, you make that kind, and then they make the kind where you push, it's all funding, is really what it, what it comes down to.
I said, that, that particular crosswalk, and I'm sorry I'm taking up your time, guys, but that particular crosswalk is the worst in town.
You're the one that doesn't want, doesn't want us to change down there.
I didn't say I didn't wanna change. I don't like specific changes.
Okay, okay.
The practical changes, I agree with most of the practical changes, but there's aspects.
Well, it does, it includes a lot of that traffic calming stuff, and it, and it shortens up the crosswalk.
There'll be crosswalk signs and-
And it bump out, and bump outs too, so, yeah.
The whole traffic calming thing.
That should cha, that should help a lot, but we, we gotta come up with a lot of money. But let's move on. I didn't mean to bust, bust on you, but sorry.
I apologize, no, it's okay.
However, we are now at sand and gravel bids.
Yeah, so we, we received bids from two companies, uh, Casella and Pike. Uh, you should have the, the document in front of you. We need, we need to, uh, choose a vendor for the inch and a half gravel, three-quarter inch gravel, and then a vendor for winter sand. It looks like Casella is cheapest on all of those. Those prices do include transportation to our town.
Have you seen any of this stuff, any of the material?
Pike, Pike dropped, uh, samples off, and they're in the hallway. Nate said, I was talking to Nate today about it. He likes Pike's sand. He says the Casella sand, um, he says it gets slimy, and I don't know what that means. Maybe it's heavy with fines. But, um, he prefers Pike's sand. The gravel, Casella, he's, he likes their gravel. That's, that's what we've been using, is Casella gravel and Pike's sand.
Well, the major, the major cost is the sand, I assume. And I'm wondering if we, can we mix and match these bids?
Yes, it's, they're individual.
So each one of the, okay.
Yeah, you can choose two from Casella and one from Pike, or all or none. Yeah, it's up to you.
One from column A and one from-
But, so the, three dollars more per whatever your guard or whatever your ton.
This is in tons.
Now you're doing, has anyone talked to Casella to say, "Hey, your sand is terrible here, uh, can't you, uh, it doesn't cost you to say, hey, you know, your, your sand has got X, Y, and Z." I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why I'm, why I wanna pay more money.
Because sometimes you have to.
But I'm, same, I, the explanation I had for this right here, that's pretty significantly more, in my opinion. So, why, uh, we think it's slimy is not a very good explanation. I'd rather-
What do you mean it isn't? It's from the expert. It's from the expert.
I don't think it's a good explanation.
Last year we got sand from Pike.
Did we get?
From the guys that have to use it, that's what I'm saying.
Per ton?
Yeah.
How many tons did we go through, do you know?
I don't have the tonnage, though.
There's, there's more sand. It's significant. I mean, sand is our most, our, our largest expense, no doubt about it.
So how many tons?
So, 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 well, salt is usually our, for winter control, is, is a little bit more, but Nate did say they're cutting back on the use of sand, so.
Why?
I don't know why. He didn't say. I was talking to him a little bit about it.
Everybody's cutting back on the use of sand, 'cause there's more maintenance, you have more sweeping, more drainage bug ups, and things like that, where the salt, and the brines are becoming more popular, because you don't have that. And the brines are more popular, 'cause you don't use as much salt product, 'cause the salt, the brine works quicker.
Yep.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't claim to know about sand. What I'm saying, it seems like there should be, just like everything else, there's a spec for what do you, what, what that sand, and, so if there's too much clay, take the clay. I mean, I, the, the, it's, I just arbitrarily saying, I like that one better, because it is. And to me, it's not, especially when I'm looking at this and not seeing any dollars. What's, what are the dollars that we're talking about? Are we talking ten ton, or are we talking fifty ton?
So for sand, you're looking at an estimate of four thousand, oh. Five hundred and fifty ton.
And I don't wanna argue over a hundred dollars, but, but if you're, if, if you're talking, saying, "Hey, wait just a minute here, the difference between these two and what we're gonna use?"
But if, the, the problem with your thinking is, you always think dollars, even though sometimes you, you, if you spend less, if you spend less and you get junk.
I, I believe that you can be penny, you can be penny wise and dollar foolish, but I'm just saying, this, this proposal I have doesn't, doesn't answer the questions that, or even, I don't even know what I'm buying into for the extra bucks.
So for, for the sand, you'd be, it'd be, let's see, ninety-three hundred to eleven-one-nine-ten-eleven, two thousand dollars?
If you did Pike, if you did Pike, you'd be paying two thousand dollars more for sand.
Based on, yes. We're estimated at five hundred and fifty ton this year.
Why do we have to make a decision on this? 'Cause I'd like to look these products over before I make my decision. I really would. I mean, uh, I didn't realize this was coming up, or I'd have tried to do some homework before this, but, just, you know.
Well, that's fair enough. I mean, we can put it off for another two weeks, and-
Do we lose, we don't, do we lose the price that was quoted?
Not in two weeks, I wouldn't think.
When did we get these bids?
This is good until we got them yesterday, so it's good until ten twenty-eight, so you have time.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, let's, let's put it, let's put it off.
Let's table it, then, get, get a little more definitive than slimy. I, I get where you're coming to.
I, I've heard, the only complaints I've heard from towns that are getting sand and gravel is not sand. It's the gravel and the size stones and the gravel that they were getting from a company. So it's the first time I've heard that there's an issue with sand.
And that's the screening process.
And, and so I, I just, it got me kinda-
I just, sometimes you get cheap sand, and it is not worth the trouble. It's not worth the, you got decent sand that goes through the, the sanders and sticks and stays where it's supposed to be. It's worth the extra money, but let's, let's find out.
I just, if the explanation is there, it's taking, gonna cost us more than two thousand dollars to unclog our sanders? Okay, I, but I'm, right now, I-
Well, if you have to spend any time when you're in the middle of an ice storm, unclawing sanders or doing, that's too much.
Public safety at that point.
I understand.
I agree.
I understand.
All right, let's, let's, uh, get some more info and make, be prepared to make a decision in two weeks, which is, what day is that? Oh, you probably oughta change that calendar. But, all right, moving on. Parking lot stuff, anything happening that needs to be known? I will, I will tell you.
I got a question on, on transfer station operations. Are we, uh, are we proceeding along with getting, being able to dump on that pad again down there?
We're waiting for the permit to be renewed, and yes, that is in the permit.
And do you have any idea when that'll happen?
Uh, I talked with him last Thursday, Thursday or Friday. Um, I have a draft that I'm reviewing with Bonnie's help. Um, once that draft, once we review that, hand it back, then it goes to the state, so it could be a few months.
Really?
I had to do was say state. There was time involved. Tentative date to present the zoning updates is the thirty-first. That's, that's-
Halloween?
Halloween, yeah.
Cool.
Do we have to have a meeting that day?
It is, it, that's a regular meeting.
Oh, it is? Okay.
That's a regular meeting. The thirty-first is a regular meeting. It's our, it's our regular select board meeting on Halloween.
Which I expect to see Andy Corn someplace in this.
That's yucky.
That's one of my childhoods. Why I don't have teeth, I think, probably now. But, okay, so, moving on. Board roundtable, Rich?
My only thing is, I think we should pursue some, uh, some urgency as far as that water pond we have on Scotch Hill before winter. Either we get an emergency contractor up there to raise that, I'll put a pipe in, or something. Because I don't think we should go through winter like that.
No, it's gonna be dangerous. That should be, that should. There should be, there is a state program for emergency kinda things like that, isn't there?
Uh, I can look, but-
Well, look, you know, just find-
I just don't, I just don't think we should put it out much longer. I really don't.
At least some sort of, some sort of temporary mitigation, because if we have a, a wet, um, you know, icy, icy, uh, winter, which is a grim possibility nowadays, um, that's gonna be a mess. It is already, for all intents and purposes.
It's been a mess all summer.
Yeah. And I mean, the state should, should help us, but they won't, but they should, they should help us, seeing as it's the driveway to their, their state park, but, I've said that before. Anything else, Rich?
Well, sidewalks, two of them, but, but, it's getting late now, but I think we oughta pursue a plan for the following year to replace a few, few feet of sidewalk here and there to get a program started.
Put it, kinda, put it in as a budget, as a budget, uh, item, you know, just see how we can work that. Way to go. Have it there, so it can be spent.
Not today.
Jason?
Uh, hi, well, good evening, uh, guys. I don't really have much to add. I apologize for not being able to make it in person tonight, uh, but as I said, I've been pretty under the weather for a few days. Um, other than that, I just hope everything is going well for everyone. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, uh, fall getting deep.
I'm good.
I'm good, and actually I am as well, so, financial. Go ahead.
Jason, is this your first fall in Vermont?
Um, yeah, actually, uh, I bought the house, uh, back in November of last year, uh, and I came to do the final inspections in mid-September, but by that point there, the leaves had not changed yet, so this is actually the first one. I'll tell you, I had to drive, uh, out to Randolph, uh, yesterday, uh, and I went up, uh, Highway Four through Killington Mountain and then up a hundred, and it's absolutely spectacular right now.
And this isn't, to be honest with you, this isn't a really spectacular year, but it, it's, uh, it's great that you're getting some of it anyways.
Yeah, I think that maybe it, it's probably a lot more visited up in the higher elevations. Yeah, I think that maybe it, it's probably a lot more exhibited up in the higher elevations than it is down here.
Yeah, well, we, we get it late, but that's, there's still to come.
When I moved to Vermont, I always, I was curious why people went to look at leaves in Vermont, and after I moved here. It's like, ah, that's why you go. Yeah, it's amazing, yeah.
Of course, I, I did, I did make a whole bunch of enemies, because I didn't realize it as I was admiring the landscape. I was driving at about 20 miles an hour, the speed limit, so.
There's a poem by Matt Parker, and one stands, uh, is, or one, one little sentence is, "Leaf peepers drive real slow, then they slow down." So you hit it.
Yes, but, uh, yep, and everything is good.
Enjoy.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we got some-
The, uh, financial reports. I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the payroll for $34,704.65.
Um, point of wor, uh, point of order, Bob.
Yeah.
Am I able to vote, am I able to vote on this because it's not in front of me?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously.
You're, you're hearing, you're hearing the, the numbers.
Okay, that's fine. Could you just repeat that line, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the, the payroll, uh, was $34,704.65. Good night.
And your second, is it?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to pay the warrants for $52,173.31.
Second.
Uh, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And the checkbook status is $600,799.54.
Thank you. Okay. Is that it? Do we have an executive session tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
We do?
We do.
Personnel, 31383.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session for Personnel, uh, under 1VSA 31383.
Second.
Uh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.